...a study session to discuss the downtown state activity impacted by the financing district. And before we begin discussion, I've been asked to give kind of an overview of where we are today. TIFs are authorized by state statute. You establish a district that either is designed to conserve housing, to reduce blight, or to stimulate economic activity. And so it was considered by the Board of Alderman in 2013 that the downtown could use some conservation of the buildings and economic stimulation. And so a TIF commission was formed to come up with a way in which the TIF statute could be used, but would not require the city to go into debt. Normally, a TIF is a developer comes in and says, "I want to build this building." And the city uses a TIF to do water and sewer and roads and infrastructure improvements to support that development, and they finance it with debt, bonds. That was done in the Valley Springs TIF. Then the investments made, the real estate property goes up, it generates sales taxes generally, and then the taxes that come in, the new taxes that come in, above what was being received in prior years, create an increment that pays off the debt. The city didn't want to go into debt. So the plan that we formulated was, we're going to set up a TIF, but instead of going into debt, we're going to give investors an opportunity to recapture some of their investment. And I say some because not all activities, construction activities are eligible for a TIF. And they would do it by entering into a redevelopment agreement with the city, and the city would commit to pay them back the increment that is created by their activity. But here's the problem. You can't just do it on a building-by-building basis. So, the TIF district was established, and that's this document that you have in front of you. It was, it was, it looks gerrymandering, but it was done by the committee who considered what was happening on the individual properties that are within the boundaries, and whether having the TIF applicable to them might be a factor in someone investing to reuse or repurpose, rehabilitate a structure. And that's why, you know, ran out here and picked up the window factory. Because at the time, and today, that was considered a problem building that might benefit from the application of the TIF. So the problem we have is that the statute required, and we have it in our agreement, that the 2012 base, which was the base for this TIF, for both real estate and sales tax has to be met for the entire district before any distribution can be made. In addition to that, the project must meet both its real estate and sales tax base above the 2012 level in order to get funded, or to get reimbursement. We have two projects, Audubon and ASL Pooter. There was a small distribution the first year, then there were some adjustments to the taxes and some properties that had sales tax went away. And so neither the sales or the property tax base was met. And in 2017, the property tax base was still not met, but the sales tax increment base was met, and a small increment was created that allowed us to write checks for eight-hundred and, you know, some small checks back to those two developers. Even though a development might produce a substantial increment, the money that goes into the special allocation fund, this money does not get commingled with other city money. The money that goes into the special allocation fund is the increment above the overall base. So if I, if I had a dress shop and I were producing $30,000 worth of a year income over nothing, because there was nothing in there before, but somebody else had an activity that, that closed, and we lost $28,000 worth of tax income, the increment's only $2,000. And that's all the money to be available for distribution to that very successful business. So, several properties went off the tax rolls that were not known to the commission before we formed the boundaries, generally the properties that were purchased by the Colonial Dames. And the Built Best Lucent Building was, the assessed valuation was reduced. I went through all the buildings in, in the, in the TIF district, and I produced this sheet, which represents the buildings that have a lower assessed valuation by at least $300. I didn't count the ones that were $150 or whatever. And, and they are the reason that the TIF doesn't meet its real estate base or pilot base. In the upper right-hand side, you see the amount of the deficiency. So the question before you is, if you leave it the way it is, it'll be a while before, if ever, before the real estate assessed valuations climb back up to make up for the deficiency. If you change it, somebody who's in it now is going to be out of it, and that would maybe be detrimental to their interest. So, what do you want to do? And, and, you know, I had one potential investor, and he'll probably speak tonight, said, "I would use this if it worked, but I'm not going to bother with it in its current condition because there's no likelihood in the foreseeable future that I would benefit from it. So why go to the $250 application expense and the cost of putting together, not that it costs anything, but the trouble of putting together the estimates and the projections in order to be qualified for a program that didn't work?" I think there, you know, like I said, I think there's, it's a policy decision at this point. As a practical matter, you know, I think it's, if it stays the way it is, the two applicants can hope to see some reimbursement based on the sales tax, but not from the property tax. Yes, sir?
Couple questions. First of all, where are the taxes collected? Just in that district, or is it everywhere?
The collector has tagged the properties and knows what their base is, and she collects the taxes and establishes the increment and transfers it to us to put in the special allocation fund every year.
What does that tax look like? A sales tax, property tax?
It's a, both property tax and sales tax. She knows the base, and so she'll, she looks at the individual taxpayers and determine whether their increment, whether they have, whether it's above or below the base.
But does that tax, I mean, is that tax collected just on the property that could benefit from it?
No, it's collected, she collects the taxes on everybody.
Everybody.
And then she evaluates those properties that are within the TIF.
So you said it's both a sales tax and a property tax. How would it appear as a sales tax?
Well, you pay two taxes, which are business in the city limits, in the city limits. You pay your property tax.
Right.
And that's one bill. And you collect and remit sales tax to the state. Then the state sends the money back, and the collector evaluates it and gives us the money that is due to us.
So it wouldn't be an additional sales tax to what we're already collecting?
No, no, it is just based on the current sales tax. It's additional because arguably, you're only collecting the increment, only depositing the increment in the special allocation fund. And that's dollars that weren't there before the business was set up.
So what are the limits? You talked about, you know, utilities, streets.
You can't do new vertical construction. In the Audubon's case, they did a lot of remodeling, a lot of which qualified. They spent more than was qualified. But let's say, like the elevator, well, that was a major investment, they qualified, even though they had to kind of make, create a shaft for it and do things that weren't otherwise there. But if they had added a wing, it wouldn't have qualified.
What is the length of this TIF? How many years?
It's 23 years, starting in 2013, so it's 2000 and whatever that is, 36.
So if we're talking about taking off the Lucent Window property, I mean, the building's still there. Something could happen with it. If we take it off now, something moves in there and generates income, we're just...
We're, we're talking about reconvening the TIF.
Yeah, you're not going to decide what building's...
Yeah, we don't get to decide the building.
Right, I understand that, you know, but I'm just saying, if we can reconvene the TIF, and we're talking about adjusting it to take this property off, to quit drawing the fund down, if something comes back in there and generates income, what do we have to do? Reconvene again and put it back on?
No, they would be out of the TIF boundary. They wouldn't, that wouldn't be, they wouldn't be eligible for...
Once they're out, they're out.
The incentive, well, without reconvening the TIF commission.
That's why I was asking.
You can do it as many times as you want to do it.
Was there, is there a cost to doing that?
Yes, there'd be legal fees. We'd have to engage, Gilmore Bell did the TIF originally, we would engage Gilmore Bell.
And then the city would have to pay for that?
Yeah, we'd pay their legal fees, but, you know, we're not talking $30,000, we're talking under 10.
If the TIF isn't functioning as intended right now, I don't see any reason to not reconvene the, the commission?
Yeah, the TIF.
The TIF commission, and look at finding ways to make it function as intended.
Well, the, it's a five-step process. The board passes a resolution, we'll do it a subsequent meeting, to convene the TIF commission. The mayor would appoint a new commission. The TIF would revise the, the plan and have public hearings. The TIF commission would hold a final public hearing and make a recommendation to the Board of Alderman on what, how the boundary should be adjusted. The Board of Alderman, and that, and that should be based on the input of the hearings. I mean, the hearings aren't just perfunctory, they allow people to be heard. And the Board of Alderman then would approve the amendment, and then we'd go to the assessor and say, you know, here's the amendments, take these properties out, put these properties in. A question was raised earlier, when they revised the base, are they also revising the base year? And the answer is no. They will be revising the, the base of the TIF base, but the 2012, the 2012 values will still be what's used to determine the increments.
Does it cost us anything to reconvene the TIF commission?
Some advertising expense. And the, I mean, I will, I will consult with Gilmore Bell about the process for reconvening the TIF commission. They're really good at not charging us. If they don't, never charge for a phone call. And, and, but there's likely that they will want to draft the documents that are used, because that's ultimately, you'll get in trouble if you don't follow the proper procedures.
It'll cost a little bit.
A little bit, I don't think it's going to be very much.
But not very much.
What was the $10,000 that you mentioned?
I think it'd be under that, it'd be more like, I'm thinking more in terms of three, maybe.
The $10,000 is to actually redo the TIF, once you've decided what you want to do, or no?
No, I don't, I think total cost will be well under $10,000. I think it's probably under five.
What kind of timeframe are you looking at?
90 days. It depends on how quickly you'll get people appointed, and how quickly they meet, and...
Right. If this is done, and it's reconfigured, what, if any, are the possible negatives for anybody that holds a property that's taken out?
They will no longer qualify for certification on a, as a TIF project.
Right.
So, if, if, you know, nobody's been beating our door down to do it.
I, I realize that, I just...
Yeah, and the reason is that, you know, it doesn't really work well for a small project.
Right.
So if you're just going to do a house, you know, well, the only you have is your real estate valuation. Unless you're going to do something that increases the size of the house, your interior remodeling ain't going to generate any, any, a higher assessment. So, you know, it's just not, doesn't work very well.
Unless the interior of the house is gutted.
Yeah, if it's a, yeah, right. If it's a house that's almost been cured out.
Yeah, unless you're saving a house that's about to fall over.
Right, and there are a couple of those.
So what does that do to the Lucent Building?
It means that whoever buys the Lucent Building won't be able to apply for a TIF if they take it out. Now, the thing about the Lucent Building is it's unlikely to generate sales tax. So you're unlikely to have an increment, what they call an ETS, an economic activity tax, because there won't be, may not be, probably won't be retail sales out of that facility. But they could get it restored to its fair market value, which would be that $300,000 figure, in which case they, they still wouldn't, wouldn't produce a significant increment because the current base on that building is $500,000, $500 and something thousand dollars, I forget exactly, I'm out of here.
So that property's been divided. There is a non-tenant in the front.
Well, and the assessor will have to divide the assessments.
But we have a, there is a tenant in the back that could produce...
Could.
My understanding, I mean, they sell product.
Well, but they will own that, that unit, and the assessor's going to assess it. Are they buying it, or are they...
I think...
They own it.
They own it.
So are we taking the whole building out, or are we taking just the unoccupied portion?
Well, you're only going to be taking out, well, the whole building.
Take the whole building. That could be a tenant down the road.
The Colonial Dame properties are never going to generate anything, so it's pointless to have them on there.
Basically have to do, the TIF and the Colonial Dame, the Lucent Building and the Colonial Dame buildings will put you over the deficit figure.
But that's not to say that...
But without the Lucent Building, the total of all the rest of them, don't do it. It really comes down to the Lucent Building.
What'd you say, Bob?
I mean, that's to say that the Colonial Dames will own that property forever.
Well...
They probably will.
They, they don't tend to let go of stuff.
Well, I don't know.
They'll, they'll own it forever.
I don't see it moving.
They'll own it longer than we'll be around.
That's exactly right.
Oh.
And then what about the museum? Is that...
Museum's off.
That'll go off too, right?
It's off, yeah, I mean, it's, it's on your sheet, I guess.
Which museum?
The new, the new one. It was, it was the Kettie Building. It was, it was in private ownership when we did it, and then it came off. And it ended up, that one is $21,590.
So the big one is that Lucent Building, to make this all work.
You can't do it without removing the Lucent Building.
Yeah, you can't do it without the Lucent Building.
But doesn't that hurt the marketability of the Lucent Building to the current owner?
That is the conundrum.
I mean, I thought that's what TIF districts were designed to do, to promote the idea of buying into it, and we're removing a property that certainly qualifies to be in there.
But by keeping it, we're making it dysfunctional for all the other properties in the district. As soon as they're through, we'll do the public...
And that's kind of what the commission is to decide.
Yes.
I mean, it's not up to us to decide if we should take the Lucent Building off or off.
This commission's not going to be formed in a vacuum. I mean, you're, the only reason for forming it is to consider that.
To take, well, no, the commission would decide what they're going to do, if anything.
Yes, and the commission might, it'll be a different commission.
Right.
And they might say, "Well, this was ridiculous, why was that in there?" And take it out. I don't know. What is that? I think there, that's that field on the other side of railroad tracks here. It was, it was put in because one of the commissioners said, "Well, that has potential for development. Somebody, somebody might buy that field and, and, you know..."
Put it in a sonic...
They want to put something there. And, you know, then other people tell me, "That family's never going to sell that property." So, 2036, that's not going to happen. And of course, every year that goes by, the recovery period is, is reduced. So now you have to demonstrate to the board, if you want a TIF project, that you'll be able to recapture, you create the increment to recapture your, your note within a certain number of years. Now, you know, if somebody came into me and said, "It's going to take 20 years to recapture a note," I'm kind of like, "Maybe we shouldn't do this project." But that's, that's another story.
I think we need to lead the public, some public...
Okay, so who would like to speak? Bob Palmer would like to speak, and then Bo Beckerman. Bob, you need to go up and kind of identify yourself, because you're on camera. You'd know that, you'd put on your makeup probably, but...
I forgot to do that. Okay, I'm Bob Palmer, I'm president of Bloomsdale Bank, and we are the owners of the Lucent Building. Just wanted to make a couple of comments about that, and perhaps one other building, I think that might be considered, which is the old Missa Lane Building on, Aren't They Street. Just to let, we, we did own that building, and we just sold that on Friday of last week. So I think that they're probably, with people moving in there, there could be increased assessments there, and...
They've already visited City Hall.
Pardon?
They have already visited City Hall.
Okay.
I'm aware of that.
And, you know, they could be generating some sales tax. On the Lucent Building, as was mentioned earlier, the, part of that building was segregated off and was sold a few months ago, and there is a company in there now, and they could probably generate some sales tax. And I'm not sure, because they're probably, when Built Best was in there, I don't think that the Lucent Building really affects the sales tax side of it, does it?
No, because they didn't retail sales.
Right. So, so we're only looking at it from the property tax standpoint. My guess would be is that with the, with that property being split, the property that's now occupied is going to increase on its assessed valuation. And at the time that we foreclosed on that property, we approached Linda Wagner and requested that they lower the assessed valuation, because it was an empty building just sitting there. And she agreed to do that. But certainly, when that building sells, I think you'll see a substantial increase in the assessed valuation of the building. Right now, we have two interested parties in the building. One, don't know that, if it would, one, I guess, is a possibility of generating some sales tax, the other probably not, as far as generating sales tax. But certainly, I think them occupying the building would, would cause that assessed valuation to come back up. If neither of those comes through, within about the next 30 days or so, we plan to list the building with a brokerage firm out of St. Louis to try to market it to some outside companies. That's probably one of the main reasons why I'm here today, because, you know, right now, that TIF does have a certain amount of value to it for some companies that may come in and buy it. If that, if it's taken away, it, it may drop that incentive for somebody to, to purchase it. So we would like to see, if anything, to hold off on this, on doing anything with that Lucent property, at least until the property sells and we know who's going to be in there and what kind of effect it might have on the assessed valuation, and even if there's a chance that some sales tax could be generated.
I don't know the answer to this question, but I think the process could be started. The TIF commission could be formed. The board doesn't have to then act necessarily after they make a recommendation to you, and you don't have to follow their recommendation. But that might, I don't know, I don't know what the timing of all that would be.
Right. And, and as you mentioned, I think there's some buildings now that are owned by nonprofits that won't generate any sort of taxes, and, you know, we don't have any objection to those being removed to, to improve the situation, but it sounds like, again, the Lucent Building, everything hinges on that. So again, I guess we would prefer that, I guess the timing isn't the greatest right now to, to pull it out when we're actively trying to market it and sell it and get it to generate some income for the city.
Okay, we have a situation here. We have a public hearing scheduled for 5:30. We can convene a work session after our regular meeting, but I don't want to have these folks have to hang around for that. Bo, do you want to speak?
Yep.
You've got five minutes.
Yeah. Just a few comments or questions I have about what he's talking about. In your bank, is your real estate guy that's handling Built Best?
Justin Dotson.
Who's Justin?
He's a guy that handles the real estate.
But, what's, is he, is he a board member, or what?
No, he's the assistant vice president.
Of the bank?
Yes.
He works there?
Yes.
What's his last name?
Dotson, D-O-T-S-O-N.
Well, you see this, has anybody seen one of these?
I have one.
What, what, it says here, "Starting up America's newest national park." You think that might change things? It's not going to change this TIF, by the way, and neither are you. The reason for it, the history of Built Best, unfortunately, has been not a good story. And, well, 2008 kind of killed us all, didn't it? Didn't it kill us pretty good? Is that right? Oh, okay, you agree with that? You know, I happened to be in banking in '08, killed us too. $50 million worth. So I don't know how bad the bank's been injured, but if you keep making the same mistakes over and over, you're going to get injured again. And I think you foreclosed on the older building just recently, right?
Well, it's a good hearing.
Well, well, what I'm, what I'm, I'm establishing why Built Best should not be in the TIF.
Go ahead.
Yes.
It's a three-time loser. Lucent was promised an FHA loan and a TIF. Lucent was how, there how long?
Probably a year, year and a half.
Year and a half, let's call it 18 months. So you had a note of how much on that? Million dollars?
I don't have that.
Well, I will. I was told by one of your board members that the million dollars. I think it's a public record, right? Yeah. I'm, I'm sorry to bring this out, but it's important to this TIF committee to know all this. Now, we're, by the way, your base will still stay at 2012. You said something about revising the base or something? Doesn't it stay at 2012? The assessed valuation?
It's at 5,000, 5,480,000.
Your, their base is that? I thought it was 500 and something thousand.
The base for the entire TIF.
I'm sorry, it was 5,000, I said 5,500.
5,500. And what's the total base?
For the whole district?
Pretty important.
The 2012 base total, 5 million...
5 million?
808,120.
808,000.
Is that the property, or is it property in sales?
It's the assessed valuation, not the...
That's, that's a good question. That's a real good question. I, I'm just trying to stir your minds up here, how to make a decision on this. And Built Best is a prime example of what, in fact, how about taking the building I just bought? We can use this as an example.
Two minutes.
Okay, well, if I only got two minutes, I'm leaving, okay?
Well, or you can stay, and we can reconvene the, the work session after...
Well, my, my whole problem with the TIF, by the way, I have console, and I told you at the last meeting, it doesn't work. Doesn't matter whether they're going to stay in or stay out. It really doesn't. It's immaterial whether the banks, if it's for the benefit of the bank, then it ought to stay in, Mr. President. Do I stay in here? But, how, how many notes do you have out on the TIF right now? And one's a million dollars, what's the other one?
27,500.
27,000. So someone in this room has a million-dollar note on that. Well, you might as well take that million-dollar note, and you get a dart game, and you start throwing darts at it, because that's the value of the note right now. Does that make sense? So do we need to do something, Mr. Mayor? Yes, we need to do something.
All this board has to decide, what this board will decide is whether we reconvene the TIF, the commission.
Well, I, I am telling you, it's all important, because I'm not going to TIF. I didn't go in in 2012 with 242 merchant. And I'm not going to go in this year with another property, because it makes no sense. By the way, I, I didn't come upon this by myself. Lewis Rice, a top law firm, and that's why I wanted to know who their counsel was on this Built Best. I would think if I had a million-dollar thing, and it's already gone down twice, and it's been sitting for six years, I would think I would have a top real estate person, not someone in the bank doing it. Just a suggestion. I used to work for Ford Motor, and we took back real estate owned. It wasn't Ralph Beckerman that did it. It was nobody in the bank. It was an outside expert, okay? You get the message? I'd suggest they do that, because we need Built Best to get back on its feet. We need the production, the town needs the... We need the production, the town needs the taxes, we need the employment. So, let's get Built Best, and we, and by the way, you need to work at this. We need to get Built Best back in business. And all of you gotta be salesmen for that or representatives, okay? That's my message. Not to take them out, because if you take them out, you can't put them back in. So, then they're holding the bag. So, that's one of their sales tools, isn't it, Mr. President? And I'm here to say that taking people in and out of the TIF is not the answer. The answer is getting the TIF work so they can stay in the TIF. Amen.
So, your advice is go without the TIF?
No, get it working.
Okay.
Get it working. Thank you. My two minutes is up.
All right. Huh? Go ahead.
Go ahead, Bob.
If you look at Missouri statutes regarding TIF, uh, ninety-nine point eight, ten and above, it says that originally the TIF Commission should have had two members with a, a session or there, there were members of the TIF for two years, two for three, two for four, and after that, everyone should be four years. You haven't maintained that commission. I think you need to bring that same commission back or fill in anything that you have. And that's, because the, the commission lasts for the entirety of the TIF.
Although, members don't all pass that.
The only other thing is, there's, you know, one of the things that kinda started this all is that every five years, you have to have a public meeting, the governing body, which is you all. Uh, I don't know when you plan to have it...
We've already done it.
Part... Did you have, if, there's a requirement to have it reported in the paper?
Yes, we did all that.
Four weeks in advance. Was that awesome? Glad you... That's it.
Okay.
You're saying that was a two-week-a-meeting? We have...
What?
What are you saying?
One minute?
You got one minute?
Oh, I did. So, you're okay?
Just, I, some of you were on the board whenever I was around. And just remember, the whole purpose of why we tried to create that TIF was to stimulate things in the downtown area, both even in resident, people that had old residences, to preserve the historic integrity of those, and also to stimulate some businesses of people wanting to redo some of their buildings. As you know, certainly in other towns across the state and even some of them near here, there are towns that have grants for businesses to redo their facades of their buildings that they just give them money to do it, obviously with the budget that this city's got. You're not gonna see that for a long period of time. So, this is, was one way that we tried to offer to people some stimulation to be able to, to do something and offer something to them to, to, to do something with their properties. I don't think it's a bad idea to, if you, if you can pull it off, to eliminate some of the not-for-profits that, that those will never be on the tax rolls again. I've got a property on there that, that went back and, and, uh, when I bought it, it was appraised pretty high. I haven't really done anything with it yet, but, and it did get lowered, the appraisal did get lowered, but when it comes back, when I'm done with it, the appraisal will be twice as much as what it is. So, actually, that will help the base, but that's the whole idea, that's the whole idea of it. Not that I'm gonna use TIF money to do it, but we hope that that's, was the whole intent of it. And, so, anyway, just remember that, that's what it's for. Okay.
Mayor, can you, Mayor, I'd like to, you, uh, Mr., Mr. C.A.
Yes, sir.
Uh, what Mayor said is very important, he just said. What is the assessed evaluation for the nonprofits that are in the TIF?
Well, some of these questions we can, we don't have to do right here. We can...
Thirty-five, thirty-five... Thirty-six, thirty-seven, uh, forty-eight thousand dollars.
How much?
Forty-eight thousand.
So, why are they in there?
Because they were in there, they weren't not-for-profit when we...
Oh, they turned them into profit. Like the musical thing. So, now, but you, that's a good reason to man the TIF right there.
Okay.
That's right.
So, uh, we will reconvene this right after our regular meeting to get direction from you. Now, we have to shift because the time has arrived into our public nuisance hearing. The issue is, uh, forty-two South Main Street. Purpose of this hearing is, 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 is for you to find, to hear evidence that may lead you to conclude that this is a public nuisance. Uh, and you should make your consideration on the evidence we're about to present. It's not a time for debate. It's not a time for citizens to have input with you except to provide evidence in support of or against the declaration. Uh, no Q and A, you know, whatever. So, whatever citizen speaks, I will give them that direction. Uh, at the end of the process, you will consider whether or not to adopt findings of facts and conclusions of law, which we have taken the liberty of preparing, uh, so that you have the condition of the property to compare against our code to come to the conclusion that it is or is not a public nuisance. And with that, Dave's going to present the evidence. And before Dave does, Mark's gonna speak.
You can anticipate it. Can we just have for the record the notice that was provided to the landowner? I assume there's some sort of publication or, of this show cause hearing?
Mm-hmm, in the paper?
Yes. Will you make that part of the record? So, the, okay. So, it was published in the, uh, in the newspaper, correct?
Herald.
In the Herald. Uh, which dates was it?
It was on July eleventh.
July eleventh, very good. All right. Take it away. What else?
I'm getting the computer to cooperate. It was working earlier. I agree. It was fine in rehearsal.
Never works on media electronics.
So, I, I would say one, maybe slight difference of, of opinion, I, the, the way this hearing is gonna go is that we're gonna call the witnesses, uh, for the show cause hearing, of which would be Mr. Bova. I don't think it really should be available for just public comment unless we need someone from the public to establish the evidence.
There's only one public here, hasn't he?
I mean, we can...
You'll be satisfied with the evidence that's presented, probably.
I will, I've heard that.
That's true. Neither have I.
We can, we can certainly call somebody.
Turn that light out.
Yes.
We're allowed to essentially testify at, at this hearing.
It'll brighten up here in a moment.
Don't wait.
Yeah.
All right. There's, there's a recent history, there were nuisances identified at this property in October twenty-nine, ordered to abate. Uh, was ordered to abate again in 2013. There was a citation issued, courtesy letter and abatement issued in 2015, and then courtesy letter sent in 2016 with the abatement process followed. Some abatement has occurred. You'll see in this next slide, these are pictures from 2009, so nine years ago. Some of that is gone, but some of that is still there. I'm gonna, gonna go through, uh, the pictures I took this past week. Uh, you see here, uh, as I visited, there are abundant items collecting water, breeding insects, uh, quite a few mosquitoes. There are some, these are some examples of what's collecting water throughout the property and also some examples of solid waste and junk. Uh, there are multiple flower pots throughout the property. This is the back porch, uh, bottles and containers, some with lids, some with not, hangers, artificial flowers, concrete decorations, old rugs. This is, uh, by the rear entry, uh, more examples of water collection. I don't know if you can quite see it there, but there's a tire and a baby swing. This is along the side of the house, plastic bags, broken, uh, ceramic planters. This is under the porch, again, more, uh, bottles, uh, newspaper, uh, plastic bags. And then this is some basically solid waste or building materials under the porch. I'm not sure if that's a tub. I didn't get real close, uh, but definitely considerably more building materials. There's a lot that shouldn't have pictures taken because the vegetation is just so tall. Also, vehicle in the backyard that has been there, it's also appears in the pictures in 2009. It is, uh, next to Mr. Ewing's property, who I believe is present here today. Uh, and the interior of the cab is also filled with junk. Presumably, the bed is also, but it's covered in a tarp. If you look at the rear, you can see the junk kinda coming out, artificial flowers. There's a doghouse and a barrel. There are multiple barrels throughout the property, also collecting water, uh, breeding insects. The plate, I tried to black it out, but if you can focus in on the sticker there, it expired in 2016. Uh, moving on to the building itself, multiple holes in the, uh, building itself. There's actually a bird's nest in the hole on the right here, if you can see it. There's a multiple bird's nest. More holes above the window on the left, uh, behind the branch in the picture on the right. Uh, the three first pictures were of the front of the building. This one here is of the rear of the building. Peeling paint, I mean, it's everywhere. It's lead-based paint. Uh, it is, uh, peeling off, falling onto the sidewalk, uh, peeling off rapidly. Uh, multiple decaying and broken, uh, parts on the exterior, several siding sections, window seals, among other, trim are broken or loose, uh, danger of falling off. The front plane glass there, plate glass, uh, windows broken out, that's right on the very front sidewalk of Main Street. And then the vegetation. Uh, the picture on the left is of a handicap ramp that goes up to a handicap accessible lift. Picture on the right is of the rear entry. You can kinda see the door in the background there, but they are both completely blocked by vegetation. Picture on the left is in southeast corner, looking east, I'm sorry, yeah, east along the property line. Uh, picture on the right is the opposite corner, the northeast corner, looking west along the property line. The truck with the tarp is actually in the distance. I basically have my back to the Sylvanus building here, taking this picture looking Uh, picture on the left is of the southern property line, looking east at the backyard. The truck again is in the distance, if you can see it, there's an outbuilding on the right. Picture on the right is the southeast corner of the structure itself. Those are multiple, um, uh, electric meters right there. Last two here are panoramic shops. I apologize for the distortion. This is a panoramic view of the rear of the house. So, the vegetation you see on the left is of the, uh, picture I showed you earlier, blocking egress to the rear entries, panning over to basically right near the property line on the right. And then this is the rear of the property. So, I, again, am, uh, with my back to the Sylvanus building, um, which Sylvanus has about five or six feet back there, nicely mowed, and then it gets to be maybe about a foot tall, and then it gets into what basically looks like a jungle. That is the presentation.
Okay. Thanks for that. Uh, I'd like to call Sam Ewing to come forward because they looked at the property weeded up. You're gonna be making a decision based on how it exists today. Sam will testify as to whether these conditions will change based on his observation today.
Uh, your, your pictures don't do justice because, because, uh, you know, I've been coming to the Alderman Council for three years with this. The vegetation is unbelievable back there. The snakes that come over to my yard, my dog won't even go out in the yard, my mosquitoes are unbelievable in my backyard. Something that we did not take a picture of, but I showed the mayor, is a downspout on the side of the building behind, that's on my driveway side, and water cascades, comes over the roof, down the gutter, the gutter cannot hold it, comes on my property and into the backyard. Uh, I had to put a positronic drain there just this last fall because it, it would just get too much to manage.
If I'm on, it's the evidence, and that's what...
Oh, the evidence.
The evidence here...
Yes.
Has not been mitigated since he took those pictures a week ago.
No, no, it's...
Thank you.
I guess we should say for the record, the owner is not present, and we, the hearing is only presenting the evidence, correct?
Correct. Okay. So, that concludes the evidence. Now, the question is whether you wanna find this, based, to find this as a public nuisance based on the items that are included in those findings of facts.
Yes, yes.
And, okay. So, you're directing us by the virtue of that to, uh, implement our, our ordinance. Uh, we reviewed it very carefully. Unfortunately, it requires we provide another notice to the property owner, which I will, I will post the property tomorrow. The notice is already written, I will mail it. The, uh, ordinance does not define how long we have to give her. Uh, I chose seven days because it seems like I can't be unreasonably short, but on the other hand, I have no incentive to go very far out. Uh, at the end of that period of time, we then can proceed.
Seven days or posting in the paper.
Posting in the paper. We have to advertise. Now, understand, and I hate to keep reiterating this, we can mitigate the nuisance. And when, and I mean, that's, that's what we can do. We can remove the lead paint that's peeling and, and paint over it. We can patch the holes, we can repair the siding, we can get rid of the offending vegetation, we can have the truck hauled out somewhere, but we can't make it pretty.
This will be an ongoing thing for the vegetation?
You're declaring a nuisance based on the evidence that was presented today?
Yes.
Unless somebody does something, we'll be back here again, uh, declaring a nuisance another time.
The issues with the, the water, uh, you and you said, is that gonna be mitigated also?
We all, we have a lot of problems sometimes with people diverting stormwater off of their property onto somebody else's property. Unless it's impeding a public right of way or otherwise causing a public hazard, it's a private matter.
But the gutters could be clean.
Gutters could be clean.
Because if they're full, they're, they're breeding mosquitoes.
Yes. That would be a public nuisance.
Question?
Yes, sir.
According to three, what is it for nuisances? Three twenty-five point three-four, you have three penalties, one hundred, three hundred and five hundred dollars for that property. Has anything been levied against the individual related to that penalty?
Okay, so, so let's, let's just stick with the hearing if we could. Uh, we can talk about the, the municipal charges at some other time. This is a nuisance hearing and, and all that would be irrelevant for the purposes of, of this hearing. The evidence is now closed. Your deliberations, the way I view it, this is a time for you to make a motion to, uh, adopt the findings of facts and conclusions of law, if that does what your, uh, inclination is. And that would include a, a twenty days, I, I read it as twenty days notice under the ordinance.
Okay, twenty days.
At the, at the, I'm sorry, at the discretion of the Board of Alderman.
Well, yeah, I mean, we have to change the proposed, uh, findings, facts and conclusions of law at the very end.
Oh, okay.
You're, you're, and the, the ordinance says they're allowed twenty days to abate the nuisance. Presumably, it won't happen, and then twenty days from today, you go in there, it can go in there and...
Or within such a time as the board may deem reasonable. What?
That would fit. If we post it twenty days from today and we post it on, publish it on Tuesday, that's well within the time.
Well, it says, or, or as such time as the board may deem reasonable.
That's kinda what I would want.
I can deem reasonable seven days, can't I?
Well, I would, I would say you just, you say seven days and then here as opposed to twenty days.
Okay. I, I move that we, um, adopt the findings of fact with the adjustment of a seven-day notice as opposed to twenty-day notice.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Could I do that right? Okay, good.
Done. Thank you.
All right. Very good.
You have fifteen minutes?
Yes, somewhere.
Five fifteen minutes.
Six.
Now, we're all...
Follow this meeting order, stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a little call.
Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Jones.
Here.
Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Motion approval of our agenda.
Tom.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us down to personal appearances, so I have, uh, Robert and Gretchen Roth and Ms. Elaine, is it Belovich?
Yes.
Okay. Want to talk to us about a public nuisance on Ninth Street?
Yes, uh, for the record, my name is Bob Roth, I'm a longtime citizen, um, we have a problem on Ninth Street, and it's been addressed before, and, uh, well, we're getting more and more people on our side, we want the property cleaned up. It's got seven or eight cars, it's got an old refrigerator, it's got junk piled up all over the place, and it's a clear violation of the ordinance that this city's supposed to go by.
What's the address of the property?
This is the, the first picture is the view from our bedroom window.
I would like for y'all to state your name and rank.
I'm Gretchen Roth.
I'm Elaine Belovich. Yeah, that's from the lines you... And anybody who lives in our neighborhood, uh, who uses Ninth Street sees it every day, many, many people are, really have had it because some of us have been trying for years now to have this issue addressed, and have been told there was nothing that we could do, because all of the cars are indeed, uh, licensed and, and current, and I went...
That's, that's one of the issues, is there's no code or ordinance about, as long as the car is licensed and legal...
We understand that, but if you read, unless we don't understand what we're reading on the ordinances, it seems to us that is very plainly, uh, at the very least a nuisance, and if you read the language in that first, uh, two fifteen, whatever it is, it seems to fit all of the...
Now, when she says licensed, I don't mean license plates.
We mean registered.
They're registered, no, they're registered, I have the, I have the history from two thousand and fourteen from Linda Wagner, and there's been stability in the car, there's only been one since two thousand and fourteen that came and then went out of, uh, at the high point at one point between fourteen and now was nine cars. It's down to eight, so he's, uh, they are legal, they are legal. So what we are here today is to ask you to read that ordinance again, uh, Bob can describe in more detail what it looks like, at the very least it's environmental pollution, uh, it's certainly visual pollution, I doubt, if you look at those pictures, that any one of you would want to live next to that. I question, although I think the property value, I'm an ex-appraiser from the East Coast, I think the property value, my house's value at, is, is on target, but how long can I get a market value for that house when it sits next to what is for all, for the layman, is a junkyard? And I know that's not your definition, a legal definition, but it's a junkyard.
At the very least, there are tires there, we have, we have West Nile the next county over, I mean, this is like inviting a, hi, come, come talk to us.
All the junk and the tires, they will, they will be moved because that's, you're, that's, you're right, that's honest stuff.
Do you remember right after you were elected, you helped him put a fence on?
No, I didn't help him put it.
Well, but I mean, you, you...
No, he, he decided, well, the city decided to give him permit to put a fence on, yes.
Well, that was after, after he had a chicken wire fence put up and had to take it down.
Yeah, I don't, yeah.
You know, but it's only on the front, the back hurt, I feel bad for her, ours is bad, hers is worse.
Not only is she behind it, she's the boat.
Oh, exactly, exactly, it's horrible.
And the neighbor next to me on Herzog Lane can't be here, he's out of town on vacation. I believe he has complained to public officials about it, I'm not sure about that, he definitely would be here tonight if he weren't out of town on vacation.
Well, I know for a fact, since I've been mayor, Carla has been over there to talk to him, uh, there was some progress, now David, have you, do you have any input on the property?
I spoke to Mr. Gamache yesterday.
Would you get up?
Sure, please. And, uh...
Put you on the party.
He stated that the vehicles are all licensed, and I did verify, they are all licensed, uh, they're all operable.
No, they are not operable, no, there's no way.
And the trailers are also licensed, now she's right about the tires, machinery parts and things like that.
PVC pipe and just junk, and no, if...
It's a junkyard.
If that sixty-six and pallet can get started, let's go knock on his door, because there's no way, it's been, it's been under a tarp for three years, there's no way.
And as you're reading that ordinance as we talk, perhaps somebody could explain to us why that wouldn't apply to the situation we're describing right now.
I mean, it's been going on a long time, it's time it gets cleaned up.
David?
Yes, sir.
What about the, the overgrowth of...
I haven't really seen any complaints about overgrowth when I was there.
Okay.
I didn't see any overgrowth, but I can go back.
Well, maybe it's just the way it looks in the pictures, it looks overgrown, just the way I see it.
Yes.
You know?
Where a lawnmower can't get, there's tall stuff.
And, uh, we just don't see no reason for all that to be there.
Yeah.
We bought our house two and a half years ago, and we've, we're working on it, have been working on it, and would, we want to raise what the neighborhood looks like, I mean, let's face it, our block and Ninth is kind of, it's kind of rough looking, and we want, we want it to look better, we'd like our property values to go up, I mean, if we're gonna get our taxes raised, can our property values rise accordingly, please? Did you guys know that that, that is a, uh, the kitchen on that house is a vertical log cabin? And it's, it's been verified, just in case nobody knew?
On this, on the Gamache house?
Uh-huh.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, the kitchen is a vertical log, it's a post on the sill.
It is a historic structure.
Yeah, the kitchen.
We're not, we're not asking to tear the house down.
No.
We're just asking for the biggest junk up.
Well, I said that, it's a historic structure.
We know.
You know, my fear is, I grew up here, uh, so did Bob, from the very beginning.
So did I.
And, um, you know, I can foresee another Willie Hoffman.
Yeah, 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 that's, that's a Willie Hoffman in training thing happening.
There's a red Ford pickup behind his house, been sitting, I don't know how long, weeds growing up around it, the tires are flat, and the bed is full...
Of junk.
Of junk. It's just a...
And you can't really see it from the picture, I can show you on my phone, I can zoom it in, I was gonna have eight by tens made, but at five dollars apiece, sorry, guys, no.
But you said, then do you have current tags on?
Yes, they're right here, I, you, you want to see the most recent ones, and I counted, I think there's still eight there, this is, this goes back to fourteen years.
Yeah.
And I, I don't know where the trailer is on that one, though.
It's down below.
But I mean, would that be on a separate place where the trailer is?
Like location, or...
No, no, I mean, I need to see the trailer on this.
This is just personal, this is personal property, what I'm getting is actual license plates, they have...
Well, according to Linda Wagner, they're all current, that they can't do anything from a tax point...
Now, this, this is, this is a tax thing, what I'm talking about is licensed as if, if they did run, are they inspected, or are they...
Oh, I, I don't think...
Family, I don't think...
They can't get a sticker if they haven't been inspected. Right, so what I'm saying is then they're not licensed, they may be on the tax rolls, but you could own something and not license it.
I don't see how they all would have passed licensing.
Well, this, this is, this is my point.
Our ordinance requires that, that they may be licensed to the owner.
Okay, so they can be registered...
Well, the tax issue is not, is not our ordinance, our ordinance has to do with licensing.
Exactly, that's my point, do they have license plates on?
Dave said that they do.
Correct.
They do.
Valley ones?
Did you...
Valley have eighteen or nineteen stickers.
How are they getting them moved to be inspected, then? That's a real good question.
That's a question for Mr. Gamache.
Yeah, how, how, how is he getting them inspected, I, I, I can guarantee that there's...
Isn't there inspection, you don't have to have inspections for vehicles prior to a certain date?
No, no, only if you get historic plates, you can do that, but it has to be twenty-five years old or older.
No, those are...
But...
The random probably is twenty-five years.
But...
That Impala, too.
I don't, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, I don't see a plate on that Impala, but...
Well, it's, it's partially covered by...
But it's probably got weeds or something growing up over it, the other cars I see plates on, so therein lies the, the, the issue is that the ordinance is licensed vehicles, so if they're licensed, do we have anything about parking on a non-paved surface?
Nope.
No. See, Saint Louis County does, you can't park, in cities, like Saint Louis, you can't park on a non-paved surface.
In your yard, yeah.
And that's to preclude this, so...
Does gravel count as a non-paved surface?
No.
Well, no, he's talking about Saint Louis, we're talking about Saint Genevieve.
Yeah, anybody else need to see these?
The pictures don't really do it justice, they all need to just drive by and look yourselves.
You need to come up there on Herzog Lane.
Absolutely, and then come over to our house, you know where we live.
Yep. The, the junk is very, very clear that junk needs to get going, now the cars, if those cars are licensed, legally licensed, that means they had to be, some of them had to be inspected, now the older ones, maybe not, but they would be registered with the state and inspected legally, I don't know what we can do about moving cars, if it was unregistered and it didn't have plates on it, we could do something about it. Yeah. The junk, we need to do something about, we need to do something with that, and all the tall weeds that are in there, tarps and stuff collecting water, that's a, that's a nuisance, that's a nuisance, very clear nuisance, and, and according to this, says annoying, I, I would be very annoyed if I lived in that neighborhood, so, especially if I own property there, so... And in that picture, they can see all the weeds and everything growing up.
Yeah, that's the one I was looking at.
Plus tarps and...
There's a poor dog living down in that, too, which I know you can't do anything about, but it's like...
Well, it, it's pens, I mean, you have to provide, uh, humane...
It's in a pen.
Conditions for your animals.
Yeah, it has a pen, and it's, it got a piece of corrugated, uh, roofing on it, but you know, that poor, I, well, I'm not even gonna...
I have a question about how ordinances are passed and initiated and passed, it seems to me that under the current law, he could have every inch of his yard filled with cars, many of them, and I have nothing against junkers, I drove junkers, but I drove them every day when that's all I could afford was a junker, I have nothing against junkers, but when they don't move for months at a time, even if they're licensed, uh, so according now, we have no ordinance, if he decided to put twenty more cars in there, as long as he could put them on the grass, it would be legal.
If he owns them.
All right.
It isn't operating...
Then I have another question, there are laws, I believe, maybe not here, but I believe there are, that when you build something, uh, outside of, of your house, if you build a shed or something, you have to get approval, and aren't there, aren't there, uh, land-to-building ratios that have to be? So I would suggest then, since this is becoming a problem, and you know, again, it, those cars may be his treasure, but to the obvi, the casual observer, they are junk, so I suggest, and I want to know how you would initiate an ordinance that would place some kind of restriction, there's nothing that cheapens the neighborhood worse than cars that don't move, that are either parked in front of the house, on the street, and only moved often enough to beat the cops, are house, are yard, are houses where there are as many cars as there are in this yard. How does one initiate ordinances, how do they get passed?
Well, we do...
They tell me to draft an ordinance.
Right.
Okay, how many of you would like to live next to eight cars, who knows what's in the engine of those cars, because we have no, you all see them more than I do, I don't know that I've ever seen, I see him on the road a lot, driving his, his daily car. And you know, I'll tell you, uh, Mayor, things I've heard about you are very good, and you do seem to look at things with different eyes than many previous mayors have, so I really hope you do come up on Herzog Lane and look at it.
Oh, I'll be up there, and, and that's one thing that we, this board initiated is, these code violations, following our building codes, there's...
Well, many of us appreciate that.
David's been setting out, and buildings are getting, you notice, are getting painted, getting taken care of.
Yes, I have noticed.
And that's the reason we do that, is because if I'm next to one of those properties, it's, it's, it's annoying, is what it is, and it's driving, and it's just needs to be done, and people need to be held accountable, but by the letter of the law, so...
Okay, but I, I accept that, how do we change the letter of the law?
Now, that's, that's where this board can decide and do that, the board, the Board of Alderman can do that, is, as it states, now what I would like to find out is, is make for sure that these, all these vehicles are licensed and legal and can get on the road and drive, but, and as far as the junk, the junk needs to go, the weeds need to be cut.
Well, I don't understand that, every time I've talked to anybody over the past ten years, I have been told by various people who are on the board, are working for the city, that nothing could be done, I don't understand that, how did that miscommunication occur?
Because nobody wants to make waves, and that's the problem, nobody, you know, that, that's an issue.
And that's why you're a good mayor.
Why didn't you think we enforced the codes?
That's why you're...
Because somebody would complain about it, and I might not get reelected.
Well, and that's why you're a good mayor, thank you.
It's just, it's...
I agree.
It's good practice.
I agree.
But, but there is a tough balance you have to strike between someone's ability to use their property legally as, as they see fit.
But there is also a balance with somebody else's rights violating my rights.
I agree.
I do not...
That's the balance I'm talking about.
Right.
You have to balance an individual's right to their property and how they want to, what they want to do with their property with the, the nuisance of, that it creates for the residents, and that's a, that's a difficult balance to strike.
Right, got it.
We have one other subject concerning Ninth Street we'd like, like to bring up at this time, the speeding, it's insane, going up and down Ninth Street, I don't know if anybody's paid attention, but there's been a tractor-trailer go through our yard twice in the past year and a half, and just, the speeding is ridiculous, I mean, can we get some stop signs at the corner of Ninth and Jefferson, some speed bumps, something, because some, something's gonna happen, and then it's gonna be too loud.
Well, something already did happen, and my neighbors came about, oh, I don't know, it was seven years ago, one of the young guys who at that time was living in a house across from me, a teenager, was walking to school one morning, I know he wasn't hurt badly, I don't know if he was grazed by a car, but it was right at the height of the buses coming down, proposals made, we're making that a one-way street and Eighth Street a one-way street the opposite way, uh, a four-way stop at Jefferson, and my neighbors, I was here when they made an impassioned plea, and nothing happened, and luckily, no one's been really hurt there yet, but it's...
I mean, it's one of those things you need to come sit on our porch and just watch the traffic in the morning and in the afternoon, it's, it's ridiculous, you know, you need to just sit in our yard, and, you know, you're invited.
Back to the licensing thing and our ordinance and stuff like that, I mean, we can change some of the terminology in that ordinance, can't we include state inspections?
Well, you don't need to, because you can't have a license plate without a state inspection, if the code already reads licensed, that means having a license plate.
But we're not verifying those license plates belong to those vehicles.
Yeah, but they might be operable when they're licensed, that doesn't mean too late when...
You know the right people, you can get that inspection sticker and get your license. I'm just saying.
Happens every day, Randy. That, that has to be the case, some of the vehicles have never moved in several years.
I'm not, I'm not accusing anybody of that, but I know it happens, and, uh, could be a possibility.
Yep.
Well, okay.
We can confirm that the licenses belong to vehicles.
Yeah, okay.
But confirm that they were legally obtained?
Well, and I would be...
With a legal inspection?
Well, I mean, if the...
That'd be fun.
If the license number matches the name and the vehicle, there's...
Then you're done.
There's not much more I can do about it.
But as the mayor said, not everyone, you can get inspections illegally.
Now, we, we could...
Well, the ordinance says it has to be operable, too, if it's not operable, whether it's licensed or not. It says?
I'm not sure it says that.
No, it doesn't, it doesn't.
We could also consider something about the surface that they're parked on, and that's another... Well, you, you made a good point about green space, I know there's codes, uh, in the city where you can't, you have to have a certain amount of green space in your yard.
But that's with buildings.
But that's if you put a, a structure up, yes, for buildings. Right, so...
We have that in code.
Right, right, but it doesn't cover, if it's not structured, there's not...
It covers structure.
Right, see, so there's the other...
It could be, you know, amended, but...
Right, right, I, I would, I would think maybe one thing to consider would be the type of surface that they're parked on, but you gotta watch that, too, if we were to say that it has to be paved, you know, what exactly are you talking about, the guy could come in, dump a bunch of gravel in there, and still park twenty cars, so that may or may not necessarily be an answer, you know, because people will always find a way around certain things. And there's, and there's nothing in the, in the, you know, and I understand when you're, with zoning. And there's nothing in the, you know, I understand when you're zoning. Right. You know, when you, when there's no zoning, you can do whatever you want. But there surely have to be, in zoning regulations in a city, I mean, that would mean that if, that I could start a used car lot, it might, my yard.
No, no, no.
That would be a use of the ground.
Special use, it requires a special use permit.
I know.
You can't have a storage yard, you can't have a salvage yard, this is beginning to approach salvage yard.
Yeah, this is salvage yard status.
He isn't selling anything out there.
What was Fred Sanford, he was a co-ordinator, wasn't he?
Well, we'll, we'll...
Well, we need to address the junk right away.
Now, the junk is gonna get taken care of right away.
Thank you.
The car issue, we're gonna, we'll see, we'll look at that, and we need to look at the code. See what it says. The code states, according to Joe, that the vehicles have to be able to run.
They have to be operable.
Operable.
Operable and on the property for more than fourteen days. It should be completely enclosed within a locked building or locked, site-proof fenced area.
For what?
Not visible from the adjacent public or private property.
If it's inoperable.
If it's inoperable.
Okay. Whether it's licensed or not, but... Right, okay.
What's he gonna do, move them around and back to the fence like he has some of them wrapped?
Start them and put them in gear.
They can all see it back there. Everybody in Herzog Lane can see it, so that's...
Their property goes down that split rail fence?
Yes, my property is a split rail. And that was put in because, that's another story with the same owner.
But there are things we can consider, you know, to try to abate this kind of stuff, because it does come up. Buck?
David, in your conversation with you, did you indicate any timeframe? You spoke with him about the stuff that needed to be moved, junk and what have you?
He indicated, he indicated multiple things. One, that he would move the junk, which I said needs to disappear. Martin and I discussed the fence, but it can't just go behind the fence. He indicated that he is moving. I don't know that that's accurate, I'm just telling you what he communicated. He indicated that he was going to fix his porch, which is also a code violation.
Good.
And he indicated that he was incapable currently of affording to do all of this immediately.
Which has been a theme.
Every time.
Reiterating theme?
Yes.
Yeah, I've spoken with Carla many times about this, and you know, it was pretty much the same thing. And she would talk to him, and there was a plan...
And he'd start making a little progress, and then he'd revert back to his old ways.
We've got a process here, we can write tickets. You know, enforce somebody's hand, and that's what we need to do. If it doesn't get taken care of, write a ticket, and take it and follow the procedures in accord. And that's what we gotta do. And I don't mean to be mean about it, but that's the only way we're gonna get to some action with some people. Some people, I can legitimately need help, and those people will reach out for help, and we can find them help. But when somebody's not reaching out, that's the way you get it, and that's the way this gotta be taken care of.
I agree.
We need to go forward with this, and it is, it's a shame that it's gone on this long, but we need to, we need to make something happen. And it's especially you two guys down there, this is your ward, I agree.
Yeah, I go by there every day, three, four times a day, and I spoke with Carla many times.
Is this the same property that had some sort of a makeshift fence around it?
Yeah, that was it.
Was like corrugated?
Yeah.
Yes, yes. Just looked this up.
They made him take that fence down and he put up the...
At least the joint.
They put privacy fence around the front and downside.
There's nothing on the side of the house where it corrugated was.
All right.
Years.
We will do, we... Well...
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to us.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much for coming.
And thank you, Mayor, for your tandoo attitude.
Yeah, we'll do it.
That's so refreshing today.
Okay, and it's not gonna take ten years. Okay.
Nope.
Yeah. Well, yeah, okay. So, that'll take us to Martin's report.
Okay, so...
Take your time.
You probably heard...
Joe must have somewhere to go.
That the National Park Service visited us, and so I'm not gonna recount, recount that, because everybody knows about it. But I do wanna, once again, say that that day went remarkably well, and it would not have gone remarkably well were it not for the efforts of Sandra Cabot, who's sitting in the back of the room, and will give you a report today. That she coordinated that deal, and it really went very well. So, Steve...
I second that.
Yeah, okay. Steve and the mayor, and Gary Nelson, and Brad Arnold, and I went out to look at the water tower site. There's dirt that was stored on this site years and years ago, but it's, you know, good topsoil, and we were trying to figure out what to do with it. And so, we came to, we were gonna move it, but as a result of the visit out there, we determined there's sufficient ground there that we can just move it over and make, and deal with it later. And the county said they were gonna arrange for that to be done. I mean, the county, I think, is really stepping up to the plate here. Included in your packets, this public official liability thing, our insurance company sent it to me. I looked at it, I'm forwarding it on to you. I actually think it's pretty interesting, and you should take a look at it, because it raises some, answers some questions that we don't often think about. The, I mentioned during the TIF hearing about making a distribution, and those dollar amounts are included in my report. We've begun meeting to discuss budgets. So far, the three budgets we've looked at, everybody's staying at or under their current levels. There was some discussion about how we want to proceed with budget review.
That's a question I have. Does this board, there's been a lot of talk about the budget every time it comes up, information. Do we need to have a, this board want to have a work session prior to this to talk more about it, to have a better understanding?
Yes.
Okay, so then what we need to do is our next meeting at five o'clock, we will have a work session on the, on the budget, because it's here.
Not, not to look at the budgets, to decide on the process.
Right.
Do we need a whole hour for that?
Do we need a whole hour for that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I think so, I really do.
Our phone system here is pretty old, it still works. Our vendor has proposed to us the possibility of going with Twenty First Century phones. They would be voice-over Internet protocol. I'm a little reluctant, not because I'm a ludite, but because we lose our Internet service more frequently than we lose our phone service, and once we're tied to that, it concerns me. I talked to the guy today, and he said, well, we can create a backup system, so that if you lose your Internet, it switches over to a conventional phone number. So, as long as you have one or the other, you always stay in service. You wouldn't have the number of lines that we have, but we would at least have a line open that would respond to the city number. So, I'm gonna look at that, see if there's any real savings to it. I think there will be some savings, and I'll make a decision based on that. Heather Torres is here. Are you here as a park board member?
Now.
Okay, well, sit back down then.
I can't even.
That's all right. The park board had a meeting, and this disc golf business is getting to be, like, pretty, more and more popular. And of course, you know we have, now have an eighteen-hole disc golf layout. Half of the baskets are in good shape, the other half are not. Apparently Perryville is having some problems maintaining theirs, so disc golf tournament people are looking for places to go. And, huh? Cape, I'm sorry, Cape. I shouldn't shame Perryville. And so, we're advised that if we can, if we can change out the remaining nine baskets, then their layout could be certified for tournament play, and we would be getting tournaments here, which would be a good thing. So, the leader of the disc golf organization is going to apply for community development funding for half of the cost, and the park board, you know, has that $5,000 we'd pledge, and they've dedicated $1,200, $1,250 to match, because the Community Development Foundation Group likes to see local participation in the grants they give, and so, they're gonna pursue that. Finally, you may have noticed the wayfinding signs going up around town, they're very interesting. That's not final. Finally, I sent out an email about the, and I didn't put it on my report, because, about the tonnage being less than they had estimated on roads, and that we could possibly do some more roadwork. So, I'm gonna ask Gary to come up. He's been talking to them about what can be done. There's been some kind of information and misinformation. I think we're kind of getting closer to the truth on this matter. But we do have money to do some additional roadwork, and now it's just a question of what do you want to do?
Well, it started out with a very big discrepancy today in the email. It originally came back that it was gonna be an additional cost of like $140,000 to do park, which there's 475 tons left, which is $30,232. An additional $58,000, almost $59,000 it would take to do park drive. There was other option of a couple less-used dead-end streets, and I think the figures that he has on this still is not correct. Because if you go by square footage, what he has is $15,000, and square footage-wise comes out to like $6,000. So...
But you're looking at Mary Ellen and...
Mary Ellen and South Gabery, over by, off of Tenth Street.
What part of South Gabery?
From Tenth to the railroad tracks, about Union Hall.
I'd like to propose to the board, you know, park drive is a major thoroughfare that goes through there. It's a lot of traffic. So, I'd like to talk to the board and propose to the board about taking some money out of the capital improvement fund and doing park drive. It's a major thoroughfare, it's getting a lot of traffic, it's highly visible. And I know we got a lot of other roads that need it, but I just think that's something we really need to do.
I agree.
You said you think it's six grand to do that, from Market Street to the end down there, on Mary Ellen?
On Mary Ellen, yeah.
About $6,000?
Is that overlay or chip and seal?
Overlay, two-inch overlay.
I mean, if you're gonna move a little money, another $6,000, you're not gonna break the bank.
That's what I was thinking of. You made me think about it, because I don't think South Gabery's that bad, much so.
I don't either.
The issue is that there's gonna be an asphalt project. First of, first week of August, probably, so if you're gonna do it, you'll need to pull the trigger.
Need to move on, yeah.
So, whenever the Highway 61 project comes down to change that off of Chadwell, how far is that gonna...
Well, I haven't got the plans yet, but they won't be, the engineers are gonna design the grade change in the road. If we want to pave beyond the design limits, that's just gonna be up to us.
Yeah, down to the bridge.
So, any idea, I mean, will that come pass at the nursing home entrance?
Well, I haven't seen the plan yet, because they, as you know, they've got to project the grades and get them moved. I think it's gonna be right at it, yes.
Because from the nursing home entrance down to the bridge is pretty tough.
Well, again, that money's coming out of this capital reserve, and if you choose to spend it, and we can, we'll do it. It certainly makes sense to do that kind of thing when your company's already there doing work. Cheaper, you don't have mobilization, demobilization twice.
I think it's money well spent, I really do.
Yeah.
You know, people want roads fixed, and it's a good use of some of that money, you know, and that's it. We're not talking a lot of it, but I think right now, it makes sense, we're gonna be here. We got a good start on it, and to finish that, you know, I really strongly advise we do that. I really do, because that, you look at park drive, there's a lot of traffic that comes, you got the hospital traffic coming out, doctors, all the people coming out of your ward out there in that addition, St. John Street. Legion, I mean, it's just, it'll go from, the way I understand, all the way from Thirty-two all the way to the hospital, you know.
To Sycamore.
Yes.
To Sycamore, yeah.
So, it's a lot better than what it was since you patched it and stuff.
Yeah.
It's still rough. No, it just needs to be done.
Yeah, you know, and I don't like to say any particular resident is more important than any of the other ones and stuff. But if you look at the sheer numbers of usage, park has gotta be one of the bigger ones.
Lot of usage there, lot of traffic, and it's not gonna get any better, so.
Take a vote, or... Well, we can't do it, I mean, tell me to go, and we'll talk to them, and I'll get a change order on your next, next agenda.
So, the park's basically $58,000 additional expense that we'd have to take out of the capital?
Yeah, and it's a, as I said, it'll be a change order on our existing contract, which is probably the...
So, we don't have to reinvent it?
No. At this level, probably not. If you came in and said, I want you to do another $150,000, oh, wait a minute.
We have to do that for August?
Oh, yeah. Let's go, I'll get a change order, and maybe we'll call, thirty-minute meeting, if that's okay, Monday or Tuesday.
And a question for Gary, and stuff, in your opinion, means you're out on all the streets all the time. Is there any place needed as bad or more, or is that your vote, park?
Well, taking and considering, you know, traffic flow, you know, this is probably one of the next ones.
The only thing that I've noticed is on a couple of the streets that we have redone, like Rozier, we're getting some significant cracking. You notice it?
Concrete streets.
Pardon me?
You said Rozier, so you're referring to concrete.
Well, that's an asphalt.
Rozier's asphalt.
Concrete curbs and stuff, but I mean, do we need to look at, you know, something like we did, you know, out front here, or spending part of that money, I mean, or...
That's what you do. You wanna, wanna preserve your surface, you gotta chip and seal it, or microseal it?
That's, you know, we got, we need to move on something now. We're gonna, we're gonna be fixing more roads next year, you know, in the budget, we're gonna have more money.
I can't imagine having to tear up Rozier again in five years and redo it, I mean...
Is it just normal maintenance, where it needs to be sealed, or is there an issue underneath?
I don't know the answer to that. But, I mean, you know, crack filling would definitely be a plus to it.
Right, keep the water and the ice out of it in winter time.
Yeah, it's not just line cracks here and there, there's some places out there that's pretty spiter, you know, all over the place, but...
Well, okay, we'll proceed with the preparation of the change order, and we'll call you for a meeting Tuesday afternoon, probably.
Do we have consideration of Mary Ellen or not?
Well, tell me, put it in or take it out.
You think that's pretty accurate, six grand?
Going on square footage-wise, you know, with...
Why don't we, let's clarify with the contractor, if it's in that order of magnitude, we'll just go ahead and put it in the change order. If it ends up being something that double that, we have to reconsider.
You had a recommendation, Seventh Street.
Seventh Street's bad. I don't think it's been touched for a while. I mean, but you can go through, like, there's a list of roads that you can see. Yeah, that's pretty much every street can see. Yeah.
You know, you got dealt for where the gas company's picking up everything and...
Okay, that's a start. Very good. There we go. Thank you, thank you, Gary.
Thanks, Gary.
Sandra, that brings your report up.
Good evening. You have my report in your packets, and Martin stole half my report, so, I'm just kidding. Yes, on Monday, we had the National Park Service here for like a preliminary visit, and as you know, we also had Senator Blunt and Senator Murkowski from Alaska. To me, the important things are that this was the formal designation of our site as authorized to become a unit of the National Park Service, and it opened the direct dialogue between us and the regional park, regional National Park Service staff. And we also received the official announcement that Tim Good, who has been working very closely with us over all these several, the last several years, will be the superintendent over this park when it is established. So, those are all really good, really good news. We also, as an aside, received some excellent media coverage from that. We had, is there anyone here who saw some of the media coverage Monday afternoon, Monday evening? So, we had three network affiliate TV stations that covered us. We had AM and FM radio in St. Louis, St. Francis, St. Genevieve, Cape, and Perry County, and we had multiple print and online news services that covered us. That's always good for St. Genevieve, to get that kind of positive coverage. Excuse me. I would also like to thank and acknowledge, of course, Martin and the mayor, but also Alderman Donovan, Joe Gerst, and Mooney for participating in some or... but also Alderman Donovan, Joe Gerst, and Mooney for participating in some, or in some cases, all of the day that day, and all of the many organizations and stakeholders who were present, either at the breakfast, or the dinner, or both of those, because it really showed the National Park Service and our legislators that there's a lot of support in this community for this project, as if they didn't already know that, because we've been working on it for twenty years. You have several other notes on there from me. I wanted to point out that this whole week, we've had a video crew here from the Missouri Life PBS program. From Monday through today, they covered various aspects of St. Genevieve as a destination, and this will be wrapped up into a thirty minute segment that will air on PBS stations all over the state this fall. And as Martin said, the wayfinding signs are here, that's a wonderful example of persistence paying off, right? And also of a great cooperative effort between the city, the street department, the local organization with the downtown renewal, or downtown St. Genevieve, and we're really glad to see those going up. There've been a lot of social media activity about that. Finally, a few events things. This weekend marks the return of the American Queen showboat to bringing guests in on Saturday and Sunday this weekend, and then they have two dates in September. These are the dates that they are parking that boat in Chester, and people getting on a bus and coming here to visit St. Genevieve. We hope one day they'll be getting off the boat here someplace, and more of them will be coming to St. Genevieve. Also, tonight is the final Muni Band Night, and it will be, even though we had some rain this afternoon, it will be on the Valley Desert at eight o'clock tonight, so we hope that many of you can attend that. Tomorrow night is the tenth anniversary of the St. Genevieve Fourth Friday Art Walk. Again, this is an organization that has, or an effort that has been active in St. Genevieve for a long time, and I hope that you'll be able to participate, because it's not your typical art walk. There will actually be an enhanced level of artists represented in various galleries throughout the downtown historic district, and that starts at six PM tomorrow night, Friday night. Finally, I emailed a copy of this, a scan of this PDF, to all of the Aldermen. I thought I would just circulate these two, we didn't get very many of these, so I would like to get them back, but they will be available at a welcome center. And then, has anybody been down to the ferry landing lately? Yes, what an improvement, right? I mean, we've got the big improvements at the Marina property, and now we have big improvements at the ferry landing. And if you haven't been up there, Mississippi Lime donated some rock, and the street department spread it and did a beautiful job of it, and it's a huge improvement to the appearance of our ferry landing, which is the front door to St. Genevieve for many people crossing the Mississippi River. So that's all I have in my report unless anyone has any questions. Yes.
I want to make just a quick comment, Sandra, and stuff, your first paragraph here definitely underplays the involvement. How many people was that in the morning?
We had probably sixty people at the morning.
I mean, we had everybody from the National Park System, from the.
Yes, so senators, their staff, National Park, from the regional level. We had a gentleman here from the US Department of the Interior. This started out as three people from National Parks were gonna come and meet with us and open the dialogue, and it just kept getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And the whole day, really, it turned out beautifully, we had great weather, we had great participation, we had a great number of people who came out just to support us, and they were there at the Amaro mid-morning to hear the presentations by the senators, so you're absolutely right, it was a really nice turnout.
It was a very interesting meeting and stuff, and the one point, I guess, that the current director made and stuff was that it's very important that we all get behind this program.
Yes.
I don't wanna underestimate that and stuff, because that is very important. They basically put the ball in our lap and said, you better run with it.
Yes, yes, and so that was, that marks the beginning of this dialogue, and as you know, this is a huge, a huge opportunity, a huge turning point for St. Genevieve, to have the National Park Service arrowhead out on the interstate. It's going to get more people who have never gotten off at our exit before to get off at our exit now, because they realize the significance of what is really preserved here, so.
Very interesting.
That day started at eight o'clock, and I don't think we got done till eight or eight-thirty, did we?
At least, yeah. If you were with the group that walked around after the dinner, we, you know, it was late night.
Oh, right, I didn't know about that.
Yeah. But it was a really, really good day, and thank you to everyone. Well, thank you.
Just the matter of the commitment of the people that was there was something to see.
Yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sandra. Cory?
Good evening.
Evening.
Steve's out town, had another meeting, you guys got a copy of the report? You guys have any questions, I'll answer them to the best of my knowledge. Yeah, if I can't answer them, I'll get you an answer and get back to you. Yes, sir. So, if you've got any questions, I can answer them best of my knowledge. You do know Cochran will be here tomorrow, correct, for the water tower, correct, Martin?
They probably said that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Cory. Yeah, I suppose Don right before, he wanted to let me know that the media zone, which you gotta try and know, if you get anybody come in, or they all complain about the cable TV, channel nine ninety. Well, anyway, it's down, it's the four boxes on the screen that have the radar, time and temp, fourth and board, and the radar. Well, anyway, it's being ordered, it should be back in possibly next week, so those people who are missing that right now are maybe gonna be able to have it back next week. That's our, that's the plan according to Don, I didn't make the last meeting, anyway. That's all he informed me about, so, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Takes us, any public comments? To the podium, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Nagar, I live at eleven ninety-nine Market Street. And as to the Mary Ellen Street, it's almost, the grass is almost grown together. It's about ten foot wide, that road is just, it's shot. There's a pothole where you can see the gravel underlayment, that it's that bad. And I was also, it's platted to where my property would start, but it hasn't been paved. There used to be a barricade up there. Yes, yeah, all the way to the end of Mary Ellen. There used to be a barricade there that I never went past, but I've had that property twenty years, and had a barricade removed, and I cleaned up the lots, straightened them up pretty well, and I was just wondering if the possibility of getting that paved. Plus, adding the twenty foot by forty foot extension that it would take to come to my property edge. And it is ready to pave, there's four to six inches of pack rock, and it's ready to go.
My only question is, what you brought up there is putting an asphalt overlay on something that's already grown over with grass and got holes in it, is that a?
Well, I mean, it'd have to be cleaned up, it'd have to be straightened. If you wait another five years, you'll be digging it all out and replacing it all, gravel, pavement, and everything.
I'll go with whatever Gary's recommendation is on that.
Okay. And then, one other thing about, on my three lots I have at the end of Mary Ellen, about two years ago, I don't know if it was the city, or if it was Alliance Water, if they had a water leak, they came onto my property, dug it all up, and didn't say a word to me. And I was trying to figure out who the hell was on my property, I had no idea. And then they came in, luckily, when they came in to backfill what they had tore up, I happened to be on them lots and saw who it was. Because for two, I, how can they come on my property?
Who was it?
I don't know if it was the city, or if it was Alliance, it was a water line.
Is there a water line on your property?
Yes, there's a water line and a sewer line.
There's a water line, there's an easement for maintenance.
But they don't, they don't have to tell you?
No.
No, okay, forget that.
A water line breaks, they can't wait to try and find the property or fix it, they just gotta go fix it.
Well, he could tell me, two days later, they were there, but they don't have to do anything. Even as just.
Should they?
Yes.
Do they have to? No, they have the right to use the easement.
Okay. All right, well, that covers that, I didn't think there was any, but you would think they would have the courtesy to tell you that they were on your property digging it all up.
And Cory's listening to this, so.
They may have not known he was the owner, but, I mean.
Well, that's easily, that's just a call to City Hall.
Anytime I wanna know who owns a piece of property, I go down into courthouse, I tell them where it's at, and they give me a plaque. Is that that, is that that hard to do?
No, no.
And they could probably just call City Hall, and they would know.
Right.
But anyway, that's, the main thing is that street, trying to get it fixed up. Like I said, if you wait very much longer, you'll be digging the whole thing up, starting from zero, and that's gonna be a lot more.
Okay.
And then the matter of the extension, because it is platted to my lot. It hasn't been paved in a long year, because nobody ever did anything with them lots, but it is platted as a street. And I was just.
I'll have to look up, look that up.
I am.
And just to see if I could get that extension done. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much for coming. You all have a good day. Heather?
Hi, my name's Heather Torres. I am coming here today because I have a problem with Eighth Street and people speeding on it. I live where Eighth Street ends to Market, so I live on Market, but it's directly where Eighth Street ends at. And that big hill, people go speeding down it so fast. I've had people slam into, like, I have a speed, like a little speed bump to kinda detour the water that comes down it, but people will run into my driveway, they've hit the fence. It's a big problem, and I'm just, it's not safe for me to live there, honestly. I fear every winter, I hear them, I can hear them coming in the middle of the night, and the first thing I think of is, oh my God, I gotta grab my baby, because if they come into my house, they are gonna hit my bedroom, and they're gonna hit my daughter's crib. It's really a safety issue, and it's not just, even at night, though, that the kids go speeding down there. One of those kids are gonna get hurt, and something has to be done to slow people down on Eighth Street Hill, because that's where all the students come, when they get out of school, they go straight down Eighth Street, and they're speeding, they're squilling tires, and, I mean, I never see cops even down there writing tickets or anything about all them, they just, there's no consequences to people speeding down Eighth Street, other than ultimately, it's going to take someone's life, and most likely, it'll be somebody in my house, whoever's in the bedroom, so. I just hope that maybe you guys can come up with a solution, either speed bump, something, trying to slow people down on that hill, because it's really a big issue, and it's, like I said, that's.
You're talking about, what's your address?
Seven ninety-eight Market. I'm right, I'm directly in front of where they come into my house, whenever they don't stop in time. And like I said, it's happened numerous times, they'll either, they'll come right into like the middle of my house, and luckily, they'll stop before they hit it, but, or they'll come, and then they'll freak out, and they'll swerve just enough to go straight into my driveway, or my driveway kind of has like a little, it goes down a little bit, so they'll hit that, and then they'll get stuck right there, but if they don't swerve in time, they're gonna hit my bedroom.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's Mr. Light, and that's all.
Yeah, big.
I think the only way to do anything with that is to put a speed bump or something, kind of, we can do that or not?
Well, emergency care providers do not like speed bumps, but enforcement, enforcement.
I was gonna say enforcement.
Yeah, and it helps for a while, and then they go back to their old habits and you gotta do it again. But, well, I think Jason's left the room, but on both ninth and eighth, I think we need to talk about stepping up enforcement in the, trying to address the problem, at least for as long as it lasts.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, it's not, the students are a big problem during the day, but it's drunk people at night that are going down that hill and missing it. Last year, during the summer, I had someone, I mean, do it numerous times, come into my yard. There was like a, there's a house beside there now, but they would come in right there, they'd pull out, they ended up taking out something over by the Knights of Columbus, I believe, that night too, it was a yellow car. But, I mean, I was scared that they were gonna come into my house, and it's, every winter, it happens, nonstop, in the night, you'll hear the tires squilling, and that's, most of the time, they end up either in my driveway or luckily not hitting the house yet, but.
Then you got their big speed bump right there.
We do, yeah.
That's not, that's a water diversion.
It's the water deterrent.
It's a speed bump when your car hits it.
Yeah, it stops the water, that's why I said at the beginning, it stops the water so that the water doesn't.
Right, come off the street, get on to your property.
Yeah.
Yeah, you have the park bump.
Yeah, he does. Yeah, we try to stay out of the road as much as we can, but, but yeah. Our drive, our, where our driveway is, we can't park double cars because we've got the drop off, so, yeah, that causes an issue.
All righty, we'll look at it, there are two issues.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anybody else for public comments? Takes us to the consent agenda, before we make a motion on that, we gotta look at our closed session minutes. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Very good. There's, uh, old business, we have bill number. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Ocean just approved the consent.
What was that motion?
Oh, I thought that was for the closed session.
That's included in the consent.
That's it.
That's good.
Me too. So it takes us to old business, bill number forty-two twenty-eight, and ordinance approving a bid proposal from Sentinel Emergency Solutions, Arnold, Missouri, for the purchase of four turnout gear in the amount not to exceed eight thousand six hundred dollars, this is the second reading. Second, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Gerst?
Yes.
Alderman Jones?
Yes.
Alderman Stevie? Alderman Prent?
Yes.
Alderman Rosika?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no, one absent, bill number forty-two twenty-eight now becomes ordinance forty-one sixty.
They have no new business, is there any other business? Any communicate, I'll figure your name, Bob?
Quick one in, Steph, looking down through the business license and the cost to some of the businesses, how do we?
That's a good question.
How do we pick out who pays what?
It's in the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance.
So if you come in and say, I wanna be doing this business, then we have a charge that says that business has this charge.
The one that kinda came to mind was insurance, I guess the retailer, people who sell insurance, they pay like fifteen dollars.
There's no rhyme or reason where the prices came from on the business licenses.
Probably was established a long time ago.
And we were told in the past that in order to change those, that that's a handcuff, or it had to go before the voters, or can you enlighten us?
Yeah, so as long as it is considered a fee, or whatever the cost is for the licensing itself, it is not a handcuff problem, but once it becomes a revenue generator, then you have to have a vote to establish those additional fees.
So we'd have to demonstrate that it costs more than fifteen dollars to administer, to issue the license in order to justify a charge of more than fifteen dollars.
But the liquor licenses are like, whether or not they serve it by the drink, or if they, because some of them are a lot higher than the others, and I didn't understand why, because they probably don't do as much volume as the others.
There's a separate for wine and separate for beer and.
The same principle applies, because there's more enforcement regarding liquor licenses and more regulations, and so presumably, your police officers would go walk through those businesses.
Even then, these fees were probably adopted for handcuff, so the question is whether we can change them with that vote.
You could always reduce them.
Can only what?
You could always reduce them.
And they did reduce the liquor licenses several years ago, they were reduced, they were more expensive than they were.
Yeah, I remember when we did that.
It just seemed like, you know, the insurance companies, you know, there's gotta be tons of money insurance policies that they're selling and stuff, and they're only paying fifteen dollars, but then yet we have some.
Well, the volume isn't... Every hardware store gets the same license without regard to how much longer they can sell it.
Right.
Is it true that law offices don't, or...
They are exempt.
They are exempt.
So are doctors' offices, right?
And chiropractors, and it was like five. So, yeah, we're exempt.
Well, insurance would be considered a service, wouldn't it? Would that be considered a commodity?
There are specific, specific professions that are exempt from the local licensing fees.
Right. But I mean, as far as insurance, that would be considered a service instead of a commodity-type business, wouldn't it?
I think so. But I'm not sure, I don't think insurance agents are exempt. I haven't looked at that statute in about a year. It makes you sit, it's difficult unless, unless you're doing some, unless it's requiring a lot of regulations, inspections, cost to the city, you got to be, because otherwise...
You're just going to raise the other, because it wasn't doing that. You got to do that.
You'll rest.
Any other questions? Is there any other business? There is no other business. I'll call this meeting adjourned. Hold on one minute. Mike? You got something?
No. I didn't know if we were going to reconvene.
We are. We're going to go back into work section.
Yeah.
On the tip. Now, if you want to hang around. Those who are still with us and around to reconvene the TIF Commission and who, any, any positions that need to be filled, the mayor would appoint them. I don't think it takes, I'm pretty sure it doesn't take confirmation by the Board of Aldermen. Then we would call them together and say, "Here's the issue." And they will have hearings. They have to be, we have to have public notice and hearings. Beau and, and Bob Palmer and Mike and whoever wants to make comments, without the time constraints we had tonight, would be able to come forward and talk about it.
That's my only regret. You know, Beau left out of here. He said that the TIF was broken. He even said, "Well, we don't need to take them out of it, but we need to fix it." I don't know.
Yeah.
The only way you fix it is by...
Yeah. I had a coughing fit right when he was in the middle of it, but what struck me was it seemed like he was going in one direction, and then he was going in another direction.
The only way you fix it is by a business going into that property and generating revenue.
And if that's about to happen...
And if we can, if we can do that, that's great.
And let's not screw things up for them. And if you want to change it, and they're going to... I don't know. How many years are they going to take for them?
Yeah.
They're going to fight tooth and nail not to have their assessment increased after they, after they move in.
Okay. And then I have a question. Somebody brought the point up, was it Bob Mueller? That it's supposed to be reviewed every...
A commission. There's a commission.
So we need to do that anyway?
No, you did it. I made that five-year report.
Right.
And I did that.
Okay.
That's awesome.
So my question, though, is, is that TIF, the original TIF Commission, so they're, they're, they're not...
Makes it...
They're done.
Some of them are still here.
No. You called back the ones who were on it.
I understand that, but it, it seems to me that, that any other board, they have to have a meeting once in a while. They have to be reappointed. They don't have, none of that has to be done.
They exist for the life of the TIF.
But that's the only question. Because the legality of it is what I'm looking at. Because if we have a board...
And we'll get, you know, can't... Mark Spikerman or Shannon Creighton will tell me what to do. I'm not going to...
Well, we had to reconvene the one, the big one out by the...
Valley Springs.
We had to reconvene that one, and there was still, I think, two or three of the original board members got back on, right? Pam, do you remember?
I think so.
And then they had to reappoint at least two, I think. You'll probably find those ones that were on originally.
But it would be up to the commission whether Belkbest goes in or out, not us.
Well, that's exactly...
They recommend it to us, and then we decide to do it or not.
The commission makes a recommendation.
The commission makes a recommendation. The board makes the decision what we're doing.
Yeah.
I say let's reconvene the TIF Commission.
Well, we should.
Why not?
Start the process.
Yeah.
We'll see if it's even needed once...
I agree, because it's going to take 90 days.
If they've got, if they've got two fish on the line, let's see if they can get something done over there.
Get one of them to bite.
Might help.
Now that they know we might be taking them out, maybe they'll act quick.
Maybe that'll provide a sense of urgency.
But let's go ahead and get it started and get the moment on.
Mike?
I think, I think just for clarity, if Mike, going back to what Martin maybe started, well, at the beginning, when you did a great job of sending, passing out the piece of paper, and I think if I understood it correctly, it was every property on there that, whose property value, the assessed value, has decreased. Is that correct?
No.
We have a...
By over $300. I had, not every property on that list.
Yes.
Yes.
Right. That is, that does the property values that are, the assessed value that have decreased.
Right. Over $300. Yeah.
Okay. $300 or more. Okay. So, and one of the points that you made was that it seemed like, and I may have misunderstood, that if the Lucent property wasn't even going to be considered, then why, then it, that it was the deciding factor.
Yes.
But, excuse me, but every property that would come off, for instance, if, if only the not-for-profit properties came off, you're still lowering your base. So you're still helping. You're not.
Some.
Right. You're helping some. Now, we know that, we know the big fish on there, sure. You know, is that one property. But you're still helping by bringing those other ones off.
The deficit is $329,460. And the Lucent property has decreased in value by $312,600.
So that's why you're saying that's not...
Yeah. It's, I mean, it's the, right? Is that correct?
I think the point was made that, that the property owners, you know, asked, asked for those property values, that property assessed value to lower when it was vacant, and it was. But the point is also made that hopefully, if something opens back up, that assessed value to go back up. I think the ones that, you know, if nothing else, get the, get the not-for-proper...
The commission has got to reconvene to do that.
Right.
The commission does have to reconvene to do that.
Well, I agree with your statement. I'm not sure the timing would be such that it would be that beneficial.
That's, I understand.
I mean, how long is it going to take for the assessor to... She can only do it every two years.
I understand that.
So, I don't know.
So I think my other question then is, just if you would for clarification, there's, there's two things involved. There's the tax, there's the income, there's the sales tax and the assessed and the property tax. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if a property, if a property meets or exceeds their individual assessed base or assessment, if it increases year after year, but the base wasn't, hasn't been made, no payments made, correct?
Yeah. Except, except sales and property tax are considered independent.
Independent, yes. So sales tax could be paid, which it was on a couple of them, but, but property tax was not, right? Because the base wasn't...
Even though Audubon's property tax is higher than the base, the whole did not meet the base.
So that wasn't paid to Audubon in this case, right?
Correct.
So my question is...
But, but Audubon has still credited that dollar.
That's what I was going to ask you. In the out years, in the out years, if the base is made, then that money would come back to the fund?
Yeah.
And if it's not, then you said to me something about there's interest.
They get interest. If there's, if there's no distribution that's made for three years, interest starts to accrue. So we made, we made a distribution of sales tax, so that starts to pop over again on that side. But the property tax, we couldn't. And that'll continue to accrue to their benefit until the funds are there to pay.
Continue to accrue. And if the funds are never there within 23 years, it doesn't get paid.
Or if the property gets sold. The new buyer doesn't inherit the privilege. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe? You look like you're eating, though.
Yeah, I am, but that's okay.
It is. So do I make a motion?
No, you can get it. Is anyone against me beginning this process? Hearing none, I will begin.
Okay.